Look what time it is. What are you doing? We got a break?
Right on time.
Tom, you ready?
Where's Krista Cheese? They're both standing right there.
I am going to keep my phone out for calculator purposes if that's okay with everybody.
I will allow it.
Because I don't like math.
All math it.
There you go, calculator math.
Math ain't mathin'.
Alicia, you ready?
I guess.
Almost finished.
Knocked twice.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what's wrong with your chair? Your chair's all weird.
No, they were all weird. It's, I don't know.
Good evening. Welcome to the June 25th City Council Work Session. It is 6:00 PM. I'm calling this meeting to order. Thank you all for joining us. We're gonna get started with our invocation and our pledge allegiance to the flag, which will be led by our city attorney, Tom Tress. Please rise.
Our heavenly Father, we seek blessings on the tasks before us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. We pray that our work this evening will find favor in your sight. This we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda will be our Oldsmar Open Forum. Each speaker will be recognized once and will be limited to a five-minute presentation on a subject. Please state your name and address for the record. Does anybody wish to speak to the council before we get started? Come on up.
My name's Tyson Watson, back to Pinewood Drive, Oldsmar. You probably remember me. It's been a while because of the attention that I've got some paperwork that shows back from 1999, our original development and the engineers that designed this in the city council and the city at the time with the bonds and everything that were required for the drainage. Well, just the rains last night, that's why I'm here, because that little tiny rain were flooding our streets again, okay? You developed the subdivision back in 1998 and it was originally developed by a previous developer, Phase One. Phase Two was not to start without bonds and fixing the drainage. It's all in newspaper stuff from back in the day. Well, you allowed a developer that's been trying to build a lot in our subdivision to cut half of our pond, killing all kinds of fish and everything else that goes with it. Well, now here we are with the drainage problem again that's never went away since the place has been developed. There is fixes for it between the weir being cracked open that's got a, maybe a 12-inch span out the wall. I've been here for 20 years, okay? I went to Dunedin Elementary, Dunedin, but Dunedin High School. I used to raise go-karts in that subdivision because the streets were developed back in the DEP days, before swift mud even existed. So, the developer originally cut these drainage swells that they got stopped and there is articles in here that they had to redevelop and put a bong in here to correctly fix the drainage. Well, here it is, 2024. It's a flood map on the city where you guys approved the city engineer on a retention pond that nobody wants to believe anybody that lives in the neighborhood and watches the cycle of the water. And I fish, I watch water flows and I'm the weatherman, okay? I know a lot more than people give me credit for. But I will tell you here today, there is still a major problem that is really a simple fix. But you address the issue, issue a permit to a developer that's trying to build on a swamp land that's been backfilled. I build cell towers for a living, okay? I know what foundations and what's created for your dirt and the levels of dirt and what's needed. The soils in our neighborhood are some of the worst. That's why they had to backfill. And I don't care what you do, put piers in the ground, they build a house on that. I'll, I will bet you personally that that house foundation will crack within three to five years with the settling and how our dirt moves in this area. Because when we rain here, it's not like Dunedin. It sits and it doesn't move anywhere because you know why? I'm in the swamp. I worked in Louisiana, I have for 15 years. I've built cell sites. I know how water moves and retention. The city has done a disfavor to us Forest, Woods and Forest Lakes residents to not address the issue that has been there. And then approved a lot from a developer that bought a lot at pennies on the dollar. So I'm here today again to revisit and let you know that there are things that can be fixed instead of looking the other way and engineering, some basic engineering, calculations. I can tell you right now, you fix half the problem if you open the weir 36 to 42 inches, crack in that to push the water out because it's sitting behind the wall. It's not getting out. Plus, our elevations, I can tell you, were negative, okay? My house is below flood plain or below the, the water line. So, we supposedly have swells behind our houses. The rain last night, a little bit because we've been dry, didn't move and water on the streets. So I would appreciate if the city would address and look into this continual issue that's been here since 1999 and the bonds that obviously weren't fixed right. Because really, if we got an attorney and brought this thing, I guarantee you there is some evidence that goes back to URS Engineering that did the 20-year flood plan as a pro bono back in 2007. You know why I know? I worked with the engineering firm that's now not URS Engineering. So, I would appreciate that if you guys would look into what you've kind of defaulted with putting a lot in there that is never should be built on, but it got approved. And our area right now, where that lot was approved, is a flood area. So why would you approve a lot that was a retention pond and backfill a retention pond of dirt? I still don't understand that, but hey, that's how it rolls. So I appreciate your time. I would gladly drop this information off to each of you so that you see the flood information and the documents from St. Pete Times that the residents. This has been an ongoing issue. Thank you for your time.
The clerk can distribute it to all of us. Tyler, one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Last night when it rained, did the, did the retention pond actually fill or did it stay?
Right now, it is probably up almost six to eight inches higher than it normally should be to the edge of the line.
So it's like up into the grass of those people who have the patios?
Yes. It's up, it's up higher than it should be.
And you know the neighbor across the street from the cul-de-sac that you're talking about? Is his backyard doing that, that flooding up into?
It's up, it is really up probably six to eight inches to where it's pushed the pond. Because now, the way it's sitting, it's, it's, I should have taken a picture because I drove by there before I left, that it's up pretty high.
That ditch behind his house across from the cul-de-sac is supposed to flow outward toward the weir, but it doesn't. It just sits there and like a sponge.
It's a slow draining calculation that you know what, after about eight minutes, it'll start, but if the rain let, doesn't let up, it just fills up. So when it stops, then that's part of the mathematical calculation. And almost so much water can move in so much quickness and so much time and it's part of the elevations. And the weir out to the back has a 24-inch slit in it to a wall. If you cut that open, that will then allow all this water to move faster and it will also, and it will not impede swift mud because you can only move so much water at certain speeds to not impede the ground in the swamp.
Do you know if the HOA has taken any action to collect more dues or any, any sort of?
There's, they're really, no, they've been cleaning out all of the drains.
Yeah, okay.
But this has been an ongoing problem and even the neighbors that are still there today are quoted in that article in 99 and 2001. And I was going to sue the lady I bought the house from because my intersection is named as flooding and they did not disclose that to me. Well, she's a single mom. That doesn't do me any good. So, trying to fix it, and I've been out here since Mr. Beaverland and all the others and it's, it's just, it continues to get pushed away to another direction. What really infuriated me is the approval of that lot by a rogue developer that bought lots back, the leftover lots. And I was on the board for five years and he would bring it in and bring it in and bring it in. He went around us and went to the city and the city approved it. I don't know how they can approve that. So, I'm gonna put side my front yard that says, "Build on the swamp." He'll never build on that lot, as far as I'm concerned. But there is a major problem that can be fixed with, I would say, less than $10,000 worth of work. And we do probably $5,000 to $7,000 as HOA, having the weir's drain that cleared out. We had it dug out and you can only dig so far before you impede into the
Actual water table.
The slip one area.
Yeah, yeah.
Which, and they're, they're clear because our president, he just walked them the other day. I saw him back there and then we got that light rain last night. It came down pretty good and quick.
Yeah, it did.
Those are your mathematical problems.
Thank you.
So much rain so fast. I know the other areas of the city, but this is a planned development. That's the piece that just behooves me that, and I, we used to get assistance from the city long before you guys. They would come and bring sandbags. They would put markers in the road. It was known, but they won't fix it. So, it's really simple. I promise.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Any other questions for him? All right, anybody else? Come on up, Doug.
I'll change into something good because we all like food. Dan? I talked to Nick Koppus today. They're back open for lunch in July.
Oh, wow.
Oh, Flamestone.
I can't pass up an opportunity to make an announcement about our wonderful theater and dance program. Sudianus Cologne, 2 Arlington Avenue East in our wonderful town of Oldsmar. Just want to share with council community and those here, we are in our theater summer program. Five days from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM with a show on Friday and we have our biggest group yet. We have 25 students in this program, for this one-week program. We had our auditions for our Frozen Junior Show that'll be coming up on October 12th at Ariold's Park. We have one of our biggest cast with 24 students. So, we are just very proud. And then of course, our dance has also started at the rec center. And we got lots of room for little ladies and Aitin up. And we're starting for our summer show for our August 17 production. So, just have to share what wonderful things we're doing together for our kids and our kids and our community.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak to the council? Come on up. Say your name and address.
Good evening. Janice Hooper, 2228. Usually it's red.
Oh, there we are.
There we are.
Yeah. It's red now. It's perfect. Janice Hooper, 2228, Unit 20, Top of the World in Clearwater, Florida. Former Executive Director, Matty Williams Neighborhood Family Center. And I am here to introduce the new Executive Director. Some of you met him at the Chamber event, but I just wanted to introduce you to David Hale. And he is, he started in December and we've been working together so that I can finally retire again. So, thank you.
All right, anybody else would like to speak to the council? All right, I'm gonna, we got one more. Come on up. Thank you.
Tom O'Shea, 28, Lake Charles Court. I just want to say I was at the last budget hearing and I'm here. I'm okay with you guys raising my taxes to help pay for the things that we would like getting done around the city. Just want to let you know. If it needs a little bit of a boost to help get the budget done, I'm okay with it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Refreshing.
Party of one.
I don't think so. May we please clone you?
All right, with that, we're gonna close the Oldsmar Open Forum. Next item on our agenda is number one, presentation of charitable donation requests for fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget. And Kristen Garcia, our city clerk, will take care of that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Okay. So tonight we are discussing the council line items. So, an agenda for tonight, first we will hear from the nonprofits that have requested charitable donations from the city and travel, councils' travel, education and training, dues and memberships, promotional activities. And then after the budget portion of the workshop, we will then have the annual review of council rules. Okay, now we will move on to charitable donations. This is item one on the agenda. So we will now have each organization come up and present to council. So the first one this evening will be a, the Holiday Sharing Fund, Kids Pedal Power. So I would like to call a representative from the Holiday Sharing Fund, Kids Pedal Power, to the lectern. Yes, please come to the lectern.
Doug Beavis, 101, State Street West, Vice President of Kids Holiday Sharing Fund, Kids Pedal Power. We've presented this in the past. Really, nothing has changed other than the price of bikes. And I just want to be clear, we have clarified this before, I think it was two meetings ago, two of these ago, that all the stuff you see that I do, like the 12 bikes that I'm doing in the next week is, that has absolutely nothing to do with this request. This request is strictly for the bikes at Christmas that we do in conjunction with the Rotary and the Sheriff's Department where they get us the names. And we have the mayor's breakfast. It gets money that we use for the toys that they ask for. So they're completely separate items. We'll actually do 30 to 35 bikes. We don't really have a feel for it until we kind of get, get going, but 30 to 35 and they're probably 125 bucks a bike with the helmet and everything. We do get some donated from Walmart and things like that. But the other part of that is we do about 115 bikes with the Kids Pedal Power every year with Habitat for Humanity. So it's really do, does great work and helps out a lot of kids and it's neat. Even in Oldsmar, when we see the kids riding around because we know what they look like. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
All right, thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Doug. I would like to call a representative from the Matty Williams Neighborhood Family Center to the lectern.
Thank you. I'm David Hale, 1558 Roxburg Lane in Dunedin, Florida. Wish I lived in Safety Harbor, but there's never any real estate for sale there. Thank you, council. Thank you, mayor. It's a privilege and honor to be able to be here and address you. I know that the Matty Williams Center has a long history of serving the citizens of Oldsmar and I'm really proud and honored to be part of that tradition. Miss Hooper leaves big shoes to fill. And I'm proud to say that we've been carrying that on even though we're under construction. If you've been following along at home, we're currently doubling the size of our administrative building, which is on the front part of our campus, which is gonna give us more space to see clients, to serve families. It's gonna expand our food pantry and keep us serving the need, which has really more than doubled since COVID. So we hope to renew our request to continue serving the citizens of Oldsmar. We have our family support specialist who now works out of Oldsmar two days a week. We've seen that increase greatly, the number of folks that we've been able to serve here who have financial difficulty, particularly families with children who may be struggling. And this funding supports all three of our programs. So that's our family support. That's our food pantry. And it's also our after-school and summer camp program, which is going on right now. And we're very proud of all three of those programs and proud that the folks in Oldsmar can participate and benefit. Here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for David?
Do you have any idea how many families in Oldsmar?
In total, across all three programs?
That use your programs?
It's, it's a fairly even split. I'd say it's between, so we serve Oldsmar, Safety Harbor, and two ZIP codes in Eastern Clearwater and it's a fairly even split across that area. Yeah.
Right, you listed Oldsmar residents was around 2,600, so we don't know if families specifically comes to member groups. And then it's projected next year to be around 2,500?
Yes, we think it's gonna hold steady if not increase.
Residents in total, not necessarily families.
Yeah.
We also deliver directly to certain residents in Oldsmar food, on our food pantry.
You do.
Deliver to the door. They are unable to get to the food pantry. So, just so you know that we have that resource for those in need.
And those are Oldsmar-centric, not specific residents throughout the entire program?
Yes, yeah. If they can't make it to us, we go to them.
Sure.
Any other questions? All right, thank you so much. Appreciate it very much.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I would like to call upon a representative from the Neighborly Care Network to use, to the lectern to present their request.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. My name is David Lamaca, 19 Hollywood, Clearwater Beach. I am the Executive Director of Neighborly Care Network. I, you've seen you all before here at some point. We've been here for a couple of years. Neighborly has been around for 58 years, serving all of the seniors, primarily all of the seniors in Patels County. We have three adult daycare centers for people with closed head injuries and dementia primarily. One in Palm Harbor, one in Largo, and one in St. Pete. Palm Harbor, one closest one to here. Neighborly has 12 sites that are Meals on Wheels and Congregate Dining Sites. Closest ones to here are, is in Safety Harbor. And we have 50, a fleet of 50 vehicles driving seniors to appointments, medical appointments, doctors' appointments, grocery shopping, whatever they need to do, or to our services, all the services we have. Neighborly's funding is primarily federal government, Older Americans Act that comes out of the federal government. And those dollars all come with a 10% match requirement that we're, we're kind of mandated to be able to access the $12 million of total funding we're able to provide all year long to all Pinellas County seniors. We do all, the entire county from Tarpon to South St. Pete, everywhere in between. So we try to get matched and we ask all of the municipalities to participate. Very few do, especially the total amount. We provided 62, $61,359.77 to, to Oldsmar ZIP code residents this past year. We, the request of 6,136 is 10% of that. We've not had that before. We've been, we, the council has provided us with 5,000 in the past few years, which is, which is still percentage-wise is better than many of the cities in Pinellas County. A lot, a lot of the smaller communities provide that support. Difficult for St. Pete, Clearwater, and Largo to hit 10% of, of $3 million, so, in their utilization. We, our numbers are smaller because of everybody. Right now with Meals on Wheels that we provided, close to 600,000 home-delivered meals last year with a team of 1,000 volunteers, many of whom are from Oldsmar. And with that, with that team of volunteers, we're able to provide those services in a very costly, cost-effective manner. And so we're able to do that for under $10, a home-delivered meal and a friendly visitor with everybody. So it's a tremendous service. The same with transportation, for folks to get free rides or a $2 contribution that we just still try to get some percentage of that, of that covered. Again, a 10% is what we're trying to get across the board. So our request this year is, is the 10%, but we also know that you have more dollars requested than available. And the, if we were back at $5,000, we would very much be, still be appreciative of that. In case you don't know about our services, I have brochures I could leave with folks, with folks here. We have annual reports. We could get you as well. And any questions you have, I'd be happy to, to address them.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much. Great presentation. Great job.
I would like to call upon a representative from Oldsmar Cares to the lectern to present their request.
Hello, everyone. Joanne Fitzpatrick, Oldsmar Cares Director, 502 Buckingham Avenue West. Made some notes because my memory is shot, but over the past 12 months, Oldsmar Cares has served 6,030 households. That's the majority of those, probably about 85% are Oldsmar residents. And then we serve Safety Harbor, one ZIP code, in Palm Harbor, and one in Tampa. So that is for food and clothing. This year, we've spent 52,000 on non-perishable foods and 81,800 in financial assistance. And that is specifically to Oldsmar residents, including water bills, TCO, rent assistance, patchwork grants, and educational grants. Those are kind of the numbers, but there's a couple other things that I wanted you to know about Oldsmar Cares that you might not know. We don't require any proof of income. We feel like if someone comes in and asks for help, they probably need it. We're not gonna judge them. We're 100% volunteers and that's way above our pay grade. We're open six days a week. We have two evening shifts and four morning shifts. And the clientele between the mornings and evenings differs a lot. In the evenings, Mondays and Wednesdays, we open 5:30 to 7:00. And the people that come in there are mostly young to middle-aged families. They're employed, but they're either underemployed or they're just, just making it and getting a couple bags of groceries and some shoes for their growing kids is like, you know, just gonna make it. So they have enough money this month. The evening, or I'm sorry, the morning people are a lot of fixed-income senior citizens that, you know, their income's fixed and everything's going up. So, again, we don't ask for any financial disclosures, but they've shared with us because we've become friends with them. And some people are living on 800, $1,000, $1,200 a month. And if you can imagine that, it's very hard for me to think about raising my family on that kind of money. So, let me see what else I have. Oh, donations. I don't know if many people know this, but Walmart, Publix, 7-Eleven, Thorntons, they donate to us three times a week. This allows us to give away meat and produce and sandwiches in addition to the non-perishables that we buy. So, when you go there, thank them. They're awesome. Also, our volunteers are awesome. And it takes about 50 volunteers, 50 to 60 volunteers a week. And these people don't get paid. They commit to coming in one, many, two or three times a week to volunteer. So, I just want to give a shout out to them because they're great. And that's about it. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Oldsmar Cares? Great job. Thank you so much for that information.
I would like to call upon a representative from the Oldsmar Friends of the Arts to present their request.
Hello again. Sudianus Cologne, 402 Arlington Avenue East, Oldsmar Friends of the Arts. And I tapped your computer, so you're gonna have to reset it. So sorry. I skipped screens. I'm trying to look ahead.
Trouble now.
And I am old and I did bring notes, so, because I wanted to keep my comments precise. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council staff, community, of course. I'd like to introduce one of my other board members. Mr. Jevon Miller is here with me as well today. As President of Oldsmar Friends of the Arts, I would like to express our heartfelt gratitude for the city's continued support towards our Opal Theater and the Performing Arts programs. We greatly appreciate and recognize council members and staff who continue to prioritize the performing arts for our community and our students to, to the benefit of all. We touch so many families and lives with our programs each year, from theater, dance, and even our volunteer carolers group. We can't do any of this without the city's generous support. We are requesting a donation of $7,000 from the city to support and help us grow our performing arts programs in Oldsmar. Our Opal Theater show productions alone cost $12,000 to $14,000 per year for two shows, covering everything from light and sound rentals to script rights and even overnight security, plus so much more. The balance is raised through fundraising and our board is formed of all volunteers without any financial compensation for their board duties. As an additional asset to the city of Oldsmar, in 2024, the theater and dance monthly programs supplemented city income totaling over $7,600 received from these monthly tuitions. With an average of 75% of students returning for the following sessions in theater, dance, we see firsthand, and I know many of you have seen firsthand, how our students grow each year with confidence and performance skills that last them a lifetime. Our proven track record shows that an estimation of over 3,000 students and families each year join us in our programs and at our events, 90% of them from their, from our own hometown. We are dedicated to keeping our performances in our hometown and We are dedicated to keeping our performances in our hometown and free for all of our local residents to enjoy. These programs continue to enhance children's lives and engage them by providing a platform to learn social, performance, and memorization skills, dance, music, family, and so much more. I have received letters from parents applauding our programs, including one that recently stated, "Your passion for theater, arts, and teaching are evident, and we feel so blessed to have found your group." Letters like these are so enlightening, offering testimonials on how we affect these children's lives with theater and dance. We also provide an important element to our community by offering performing arts programs with high-quality, free performances for all to enjoy, no matter their financial status, and by keeping our monthly tuition low, lower than almost all of our nearby cities. This continues to help students and families in all walks of life to be a part of these special programs. It supports that we have a growing city that embraces performing arts for all of its citizens. We look forward to continuing to enhance these young students' lives together, and we want to take this time to express our sincere thanks for your continued support. Thank you, and do you have any questions?
Any questions?
I talk up here so regular, you guys get to hear all about us all the time anyways, right? Thank you for your time.
We will now have a representative from the Upper Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce present their request.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Jason Sanders, 101 State Street for the chamber. Our request is a little different because it has to do with Celebrate Oldsmar, which, so that's the event that we put on, obviously, that the city used to, so we took over putting on that event. So our request revolves around that specifically, just solely that event. So pretty much, that's about it, if you had any questions, but it's pretty cut and dry.
Any questions?
Is it for the nine minutes of fireworks, or is it to offset the additional cost of insurance and security and all those kinds of things?
Not the fireworks. The fireworks is in addition. So the fireworks is always, year-to-year, depending if we can, you know, if we have it or not, and the pricing of them. So that's for insurance, you know, the liabilities, the other things that go into it. You know, we have about, for the basic expenses for that event, it takes about $25,000 to put on, basic expenses. That doesn't count the insurance, any man-hours of labor, or anything else.
Because even if the city waives permit fees, you still have security, insurance...
Correct.
...tower, and all that.
Yep.
So $10,000 for Celebrate Oldsmar?
The entertainment, the rentals, all that kind of stuff. So, yep, that's all part of it.
Any other questions?
No question. So just to clarify, because this slide is saying it's for the use of two events, but you're saying, so is the increase or the change in the amount is for Celebrate Oldsmar? Is that accurate? Or that this $25,000 is just for Celebrate Oldsmar?
Yeah, let me see. Is that... Is it, Mark, is it for both events? Okay.
It's for both.
I almost said the insurance cost for both of them.
For both of us.
Yeah.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Because it was just, what you said was different from what the slide shows.
I didn't see the slide.
Okay.
I didn't make the slide.
Get it right, Kristen.
Okay. Any other questions?
Straight from the...
Which event did we discuss last year was not going to be held? Or am I misremembering?
No, you're remembering.
We discussed one of these events not being held because of the increased cost. It was Celebrate Oldsmar, right?
Fireworks, though, I think.
No, it was...
Wasn't it fireworks?
I believe, I believe that was discussed, and I believe the second Friday event was discussed.
That was already dropped. That was a prior.
I remember it was Celebrate Oldsmar, because we couldn't do it last year, because, if I'm not mistaken, Jason, it had already started being advertised, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then last year, when we couldn't make it work for the, whatever, $125,000 in requests that we got, I think it was Jason that stood up and offered to give back $10,000 for the request.
Right, but it was my understanding that it was, we couldn't, that event had to take place last year because it had already started being advertised.
Right.
On a go-forward basis, we had to review it each year. So that's where my confusion came in with the ask.
Right.
I didn't know if we came down with a, with a hard-line answer written in stone, what we were going to do on a go-forward.
Yeah, not to get in the weeds with that, but we probably need to have conversations about this, whatever you deem is appropriate, because of the events, this is the smallest and least beneficial, kind of, as far as monetary-wise goes, you spend the most money on this event. And we've already gone, same thing like last year. At this point, in order to plan it, we've already gone down the road of no return. The event's going to happen, one way or the other. Next year, we need to make sure it's handled ahead enough time so we can determine whether the event's going to happen or not.
Because was it last year that it was the weekend before Thanksgiving? Was that right?
Something like that. I believe so.
Yes.
And I know I sound like a, how do you remember this stuff? But I remember, I didn't go back and watch. Like, I'm just saying, like, I remember that being like, well, it's the week, it's the weekend before Thanksgiving, which was a, was a kind of a stranger date than normal, if I'm not wrong about that. And then it was, we can't. So what are we going to do next year? But I guess if we didn't make up our minds. Okay, I'm just making sure that was...
Did you want to say something, Felicia?
I just wanted to clarify that the fireworks are funded by the city out of our operating budget.
Right.
For next year, so, as a separate line item.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Jason? Yep, go ahead, sure, absolutely.
Just to clarify, because of what you said, so, based on, we are, it is too late to where if we decided to not want to hold, Celebrate Oldsmar this year, it's too late to change our mind. Is that correct?
We've already crossed...
It's okay if the answer is yes.
Interesting the way you phrase that question.
If we wanted to not, if we wanted to push the fireworks out to Celebr, or to Oldsmar Days in March, and not have Celebrate Oldsmar this November, is it too late to make that decision? Or not?
Have we crossed the Rubicon?
Well, the problem is, if we do waive Celebrate Oldsmar, insurance, our insurance is still at $50,000 plus a year, regardless of if we do Celebrate Oldsmar or not.
So that's a fixed cost, regardless of the number?
Sort of like rent, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. So I think we make the decision as far as we move forward with it, whether you make the decision for you to move forward with it. That's why I say the wording there's a little, but you could always not move forward.
Okay, so that was, right.
And the citizens love Celebrate Oldsmar. I mean, it's a staple event for us, so.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Thank you so much, Jason. Great job.
Thank you.
I think your computer went on the flips.
They were going back and forth.
It just locked, that's all. Okay, now we will hear from the final request, and the final request will be from the Upper Tampa Bay Chamber Education Foundation. So we will now have a representative present their request.
They sat down.
Yeah.
This is a new representative.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council.
Jason Saunders.
Jason Sanders, 101 State Street. So this request for the Education Foundation is the normal request. The Education Foundation, as you know, provides scholarships for freshmen in college entering in for their first year, and they also have the STAR program, which is what you participate in as far as the city goes. The STAR program, usually for the city, you give grants to Forest Lakes Elementary and Oldsmar Elementary, and these grants are used for non-funded programs that are discretionary to the principal, so they can use it however they want in order to do that. I know we presented earlier with that, but just as a reminder, if you wanted to know the last grants that you did for Forest Lakes, Principal Huey explained to us that the funds are going to be used for support for their after-school activities, such as art club, running club, and music clubs, which are not supported by the school system. Those are ones they have to do on their own, so they get no money. They would have those clubs not at all if we didn't support them. The parents have been asking for more after-school activities for students besides regular sports programs, and the district only funds the teacher salaries and events of those programs. For Oldsmar Elementary, Principal Logan was excited to receive the grant. The money will be used to purchase student incentives for testing. In order to incentivize students to prepare for and do well on tests, they put together a program where students can qualify for a drawing or prize. The grant dollars will be used to purchase the prizes. Students provide a list of wants, which include a Nintendo Switch, Roblox gift cards, and other goodies. So the biggest challenge for them was to be able to explain to students that they have to earn them and do well on the test. It wasn't just a free gimme. So that's, that's what both were used for last year, so we're hoping you'll support them again this year for whatever discretionary they want to use for. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for putting on two hats.
Anytime.
Any other questions? Great job.
That concludes the presentations. So this chart shows the organization's request last year that were actually allocated and their requests this year. So last year, a total of $84,500 was funded, and this year, the request is for $95,136.
All right, let's open it up for discussion.
Okay.
Who would like to go first? Councilmember Nat, would you want to go first?
Yeah, I, I think just for the sake of discussion towards the end here, what we touched on is that the, to recognize that the Celebrate Oldsmar is officially the chamber's event, so it's not our call to say, don't do it. It's our call to say, we won't contribute, so please forgive me for that. But, but yeah, that's just where my head was at as far as the logistics were with those expenses. Understandably so, insurance is on the rise across all fronts, so completely recognize the need for that. Thankfully, we don't have as many things to consider and discuss this evening, but obviously, we still have to make ultimately a decision of what we will fund, or if there are adjustments we can realize from some of these other agenda items. So I don't know if we want to get into this now versus kind of circle back around is a potential option, because we can start chipping away here, but this is just one of the bigger picture. So I don't know what, what sort of appetite anyone else has for that, but we can start here. I'm more than happy to.
All right. Councilmember Gannon?
Councilmember Nat brings up an excellent point, because for, for me, I see this as the aid to charitable organization line item, but all of these items in this booklet are the council budget. So I don't necessarily see this list as the thing that we have to, you know, utilize in order to make that $75,000 number. There are other things that we can utilize. You may recall, last year, we looked at, or maybe it was the year before, we looked at our Wi-Fi versus cellular data. You know, that's another piece of the council budget. We looked at our travel budget last year. That's another piece of the council budget that we can move around to find money for what I feel are very important organizations. I'm happy to get into it now. I, I did have a sort of question for all of you out there. You know, it was interesting to me that one of the presenters said, and I thought, I was very tight, and of course, all of these organizations are incredible like this, but to say out loud, you know, even if you could only give us what you gave us last year, we'd still really appreciate it. And that means a lot to me, because, you know, that's one of my questions, because that's kind of how this happened last year. That's how it worked, was because somebody stood up and said, you know what? Give it to them. They need it more. And so my question is, if, if somebody out there has the ability to reduce their request by $500, or if their amount, you know, that they have requested for fiscal year '24, '25 is somehow padded in anticipation of a reduction, if there is anybody willing to reduce their request, I'd love to know that now, because I don't want to reduce percentage base, because not everybody contributes on a pro-rata basis. I can't just take, in my heart, I can't just take everybody and reduce their, you know, request by 10% so that we make our number, because not everybody is giving, you know, 10% of their budget back to our community or what have you. It doesn't, it doesn't match. You know, you've got one or two organizations providing a greater benefit to many more citizens, but then you've got one or two organizations who are providing, who are asking for less money, but the money is very crucial. So you see what I mean? So I have no problem offering my direct suggestions. I have penciled them out, as I'm sure you all have already anticipated that I have done. But it will involve getting into some of the other items in this budget, so.
Okay, so let's wait, okay?
Yeah.
Let's see what everyone else is saying. Councilmember Gannon, I'm Vice Mayor Craver.
Excuse me? I wrote mine in pen, so.
I'm open to change.
I'm just, okay.
Strike.
My initial response to this was the same. If we can find things to eliminate, which we've done in the past. My initial gut reaction is, these are always difficult requests, because we want to help everyone. And so what five citizens are asked to do is tell charitable organizations, we love you, but, and I think everyone's a business person, not only a charitable organization, but a business person within the room, so they understand it from that perspective. If we, even if we cut back, and Councilmember Gannon, not to speak for you, but if we go back to what was asked, we're still over. So we're still searching for money. So I think everybody would hopefully understand that. So the number that I have, the increased amounts, was $13,636. And I think, Councilmember Mathman, I think I'm right. If we take away the travel budget for the four council members, like we did last year, that's, so that's the difference, the 20,000, the $20,136, the $13,636, if we bring that back to what it was last year, so that still leaves it with a $6,500 hole. If we take away the $4,000, we still have $2,500. If we take away EMO, which we've done in the past, we still have that $1,000 number. It's a little bit more palatable, but no one gets anything extra than they got last year. And so that's the difficulty that I'm having. And again, it's a difficult conversation, but that's where I was, searching for that other thousand, not necessarily being able to find it, having, I know, I had ideas on how it could be found, Councilmember, but it's kind of where I stopped. And so if we get to that point, I do have thoughts on EMO because of the upcoming elections. I have thoughts on the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. I have thoughts on all of those sorts of things to get us, but again, my initial thought is, that gets us to what we gave last year. So that's where, that's where I'm stuck, I guess is the best way for me to describe it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grubbs?
I agree with both councilmembers. I think what we should do is go through the balance of the other items to have a firm understanding of what, what our true number is.
Right.
And then, you know, move forward from there.
Okay, thank you. I have one question, Felicia, for you. I think that the Chamber of Commerce's $10,000 increase is, is something that we need to do. Didn't we maybe put something in the budget for that, that $10,000, since we gave that to them, and that was our expense for the city of Oldsmar? That $10,000 expense, when we did Celebrate Oldsmar? Did we maybe adjust our budget so that we can give that $10,000 to the chambers, so that they can take over Celebrate Oldsmar?
No, we, we've only funded the chamber through these chamber requests.
So I guess when I'm... Oh, go ahead.
We did, you know, retain the, we, we pay for the fireworks still.
No, I, I understand that. We always paid for the fireworks, but since we, as a city, did that, did that event for years, and now we've given them the responsibility of doing that event, they've come up with a number that it's $10,000 to do that event, correct? So wouldn't the city put that in the budget, not on our line item here, but offer that to the chamber for $10,000 so that they can put that event on for our citizens, instead of taking it out of this budget?
We've never done that previously.
I know, but I'm just saying, I think that we should maybe consider that.
That would be up to you all to decide that.
Instead of taking it out of here, because now we're going to be taking it away from somebody else.
We're still adding it to the bottom line of the budget.
It's all general fund money, so it either comes out of the council budget, administrative services?
Right, exactly.
Like, there's all...
But it wouldn't come out of this budget, our council budget.
No, but it would still be money coming out of the overall city's budget.
Comes out of...
Be adding to the budget, if we're adding stuff.
Right, we would be adding it to the budget in a different category, correct? Just food for thought. I wanted to bring that up. That was one option. And then the...
I don't quite understand that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either, and the reason being, it is, it's, to me, it's properly budgeted. budgeted as aid to a charitable organization.
Well, last year, we almost had to cancel it because of the funding, which we still had the event go on, right? Still had to go on, so where did that extra money come from?
No, I think the discussion was, the chamber still put the event on last year, but the discussion we had up here during this work session was.
Right, they paid for it. Correct, you paid for it, chamber? Correct. So, the chamber paid for it. So, now, we're taking that ten thousand dollars out of our budget.
Right, but I think if you have a household budget, right?
Right, I understand that.
And I buy bacon and eggs.
But I'm just saying that we.
And I also buy a Nintendo.
Hang on, what? Go ahead and see.
But I also buy a Nintendo. It's still taking away from our household budget. You see what I'm saying? So, what you're saying is, put it somewhere else, and it doesn't count against.
Or get it from somewhere else.
Doesn't count against the council, or the council budget, but it still counts against the overall budget, if I'm understanding correct. Right?
Yep.
Right, so I don't.
What department budget do you think is better appropriated from?
I have no idea.
Yeah, moving it from here to somewhere else, it still counts as the ten grand figure.
Probably our special events bucket.
Do we have a special?
We don't have a special.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, I'm just not saying that, but I'm just saying somewhere. It had to come out somewhere. We paid for it in the past.
Out of this?
No, not out of this.
When we were hosting the event, is that the point you're making, is when we were hosting the event, it was in?
It's where did that money come?
Recreation?
I don't know.
Parks and Rec?
Maybe I can add some clarity. Since we no longer host Celebrate Oldsmar, and haven't for several years, we expanded our offerings in the recreation collection, so that now, we do more family-based events. So, we don't have the budget to take back Celebrate Oldsmar and still maintain the level of service that we're providing through the other events.
So, we have to choose, just like everything else. Either we fund the family events that we now fund in Parks and Rec, or we put Celebrate Oldsmar back in Parks and Rec and take away the family events.
Right, or added, you know, and then you're talking about additional, something has to go, or you have to add additional FTEs, which right now, our budget doesn't support.
Yeah.
Right, so I think, is your suggestion go to another portion of the?
She just answered it.
Okay.
I'm good.
But go to another portion of the budget and move it into charitable donations, because that's the only way that we could provide the money that the chamber's requesting, correct?
Correct. Thank you. All right, and the other thing I want to make something clear tonight, I already discussed this with Felicia, that the travel budget for two thousand dollars will be added to this, so I will not be traveling next year.
Okay.
Okay? All right, so that you want?
Mayor, could I just ask, Vice Mayor, could, yes, I was trying to run the numbers, but...
Yes, you were.
Because you kind of hit, proposed a target total for charitable organizations? Is that correct? Or just trying to fund what their existing, their prior year's funding was?
Say seventy-five thousand dollars is a hardline number, that's where I started.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we're amount over budget, as everyone can see in red, but it might be difficult for, so it's twenty thousand dollars, or twenty thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Right.
So, the first thing I did was look at the numbers from last year that were budgeted, and the amount of increase in asks.
Okay.
And so, that was ten thousand, fifteen hundred, sixteen thirty-six, and five hundred, okay? That got me to thirteen thousand six thirty-six.
Okay, that's the difference of increase from what we funded last year.
Correct. So, since amount over is twenty-one thirty-six, if we eliminated the amount of increases in asks, that would leave sixty-five hundred dollars.
Yep.
Now.
The math checks.
Okay.
With the mayor's statement now, saying he wouldn't travel, and he would add his budget, that's sixty-five hundred dollars if we all eliminate our budget. So, that's new information that I just received within the last three minutes. So, that would actually get us to break even.
Eighty, eighty-one thousand five hundred.
If we didn't increase any of the amount of donations that we gave last year.
Okay.
Okay.
Understood, I fully got it.
So, if we were to increase even further, then we would have to go through the exercise of, what else is in our budget that we'd be willing to part with? Which, we have fifteen hundred dollars scheduled for EMO, right? None of us will go. That said, as of March of 2025, there will be most likely two new or newer council members up here who may want to go.
Sure.
We need to leave that wiggle room and not decrease it by the full fifteen hundred. And so, it was that sort of, not only mental calculations, but, and I'm not a math person, as you all know, but it was, well, can we get to the seventy-five? Right now, we're there. Can we increase any of the asks by eliminating other things that we would receive in the budget book? And thank you for confirming my math checked out. Makes me feel good.
It sounds, Mayor, like we could, can we pass over Agenda Item Two briefly to talk about Agenda Items?
Why not? Absolutely.
Three and four, to see if there is?
Yep.
Some room?
Right, because it does sound like we're almost to last year's.
The only thing I.
Last fiscal year with consideration for travel. We're five hundred off if the food stays in there for work sessions.
Right. Yeah, we're on page three thirty-seven.
Oh, yeah, 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 you're right. No, total amount proposed, oh, well, if the food stays, yeah, then we're, yeah, we're five hundred dollars off. Forgive me.
But we're close.
We're close, yep.
With, with, with travel, so then it's, can we proceed and then see, what can we add back in to Agenda Item One, the table? Because we're five hundred off. It sounds like we can get there.
If we can get there, can we get any other increases?
Right, exactly.
Okay, the only thing is, the, on page three thirty-eight, which is Item Three, the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council Resiliency Summit, we don't need that.
Okay.
That's four hundred dollars there. That's at the bottom page of three thirty-eight. We don't need that either.
So, you requested to attend, you're not planning on going?
But why are you saying we don't need it now?
I, I'm, I'm not, I went this year.
Well, there's also been some, just for a little bit of additional information, I shared this with the city manager earlier, there's been some discussion at TBRPC about considerations of, will the summit be held still on an annual basis versus only doing awards every year, and then summit every other year, and that, I missed the last meeting because I was on vacation. I don't know if that's been finalized yet.
Well, it's kind of funny that you said that, because this year, there was like nobody there.
Sure.
I spent, I spent the three days.
That's part of why in their budget.
And the year before, it was packed, and this year, there was like no one.
Yes, so they, they are assessing that as part of their budgeting process to determine, are they going to hold the full-blown summit on an annual basis versus every other year, and then still just do the awards luncheon? So, that is, as far as I know right now, yet to be determined, so I would think it is fair to say it's not, we shouldn't budget for now, because if the mayor just went, and I'm still covered as, as the rep for TBRPC, so we still can't have somebody to go there, I don't know if I can defer in the event, I'm unable to attend, and still, we get one person covered through being a member. We can figure those things out, but I can definitely still attend, if, if they in fact do hold it next year.
So, that would be four hundred?
Yes.
What about the National League of Cities Summit? I just don't, I don't know.
Well, I would like to, I would like, I'm glad, you want to talk about that now, everyone?
Yeah.
The reason why I put that on the agenda is because it's going to be held in Tampa. It's usually somewhere else in the country. It's never been in Tampa. So, this is the only opportunity that us, as a council, will be able to attend the National League of Cities Summit at the Convention Center in November. That was my only reasoning, I would, I would like to attend.
Well, I mean, I mean, no doubt of.
Can I ask that? In what way does?
Well, it's a part of the Suncoast League of Cities and the Florida League of Cities, so the National League of Cities is all the leagues around the country.
And what do you, is it like educational forums? Is it workshops? What, I'm sorry, I don't.
I honestly, I don't know, can't answer that question, but yes, it's going to be summits, it's going to be educational opportunities, yes.
We don't know on what topics, though, whether they would actually.
And I don't have the agenda, no.
Here, since it's national.
No, that's why the email was sent out by the city clerk today, I asked, we were members at one time, which I don't ever remember, since I've been in council, I don't ever remember being a member, but we were a member, and then you sent out the email that was canceled by Al.
The, the only thing I found was an email from 2020. It looks like the city ceased membership in 2020.
I am.
What date was that email? Do you happen to know offhand? Was it because of?
June seventeenth, I remember, because it was my dad's birthday. June seventeenth, 2020.
Was that a COVID thing?
Yeah, it was.
We don't need to do it, because we don't know when COVID's going to be?
Yeah.
Perhaps.
I am.
But I don't know why, I don't remember it ever being on the agenda, being approved to be a member of the National League of Cities ever, so that's why I asked that question today to the city manager, to try to clarify that for us tonight, because I, and my, Doug, I mean, you want to jump in? Do you know anything about it?
I never recall us being a member of the National League of Cities.
I know, when, when you were mayor, I don't, I don't ever remember once us ever talking about it, but we were members.
I am.
So.
If I may.
But that's, yes, go ahead, Councilmember Gannon, yes.
I questioned the National League of Cities Summit. I understand that it is kind of neat that they are having it in Tampa, but, you know, I don't know that we've gone to it in any other year. I don't quite understand what's to be gained from it, as opposed to what could be gained from the Florida League of Cities Conference. And then, I think we've already discussed the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council Resiliency Summit, and that's another, so a thousand dollars for the NLC Summit, the four hundred dollars for the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, and then, the Florida Redevelopment Agency Conference in Tampa is another four hundred and ninety-five dollars. And for me, given the sunset of the CRA and the, you know, the general fund providing services to the CRA, but we don't, you know, get to, but then, all of our tax dollars that we get from the CRA are then tied to, to pay for only things in the CRA, I just, and I don't honestly see it being extended based on the factors that would require us to qualify, you know, in twenty-five.
This comes out of the CRA budget.
Yes, I understand, but I just, I didn't see the efficacy of that. But if, if there's not an appetite to remove that, I just, I don't see the efficacy of the National League of Cities Summit for a thousand dollars to go to Tampa for three days.
I don't have a problem with removing the National League of Cities, so that gives us an extra thousand dollars right there, but I really would like to attend the Redevelopment Agency, and with what we are doing right currently, right now, with the redevelopment of our downtown and the library area, I would suggest that everyone go to this. This is, the Florida Redevelopment Agency's conferences are incredible. There's such a great learning opportunity for us with the redevelopment we're doing right now in our downtown, and for four hundred and ninety-five dollars out of our CRA budget, which we have money in, that's not a big number, and all of us can attend.
And Mayor, I have an item for consideration. The promotional, I'll just skip to that side.
Page.
Let me see. Should be the next slide.
Chris, am I getting there?
Yes.
The EMO, it's three hundred dollars for all five of us, so even if we held on to two registration fees, that would free up another nine hundred dollars.
Yeah, I think we should save for the new, potentially new council members.
Right, so that would be six hundred, so fifteen hundred.
Especially EMO One and EMO Two, they can pick and tackle those in one year.
If each of you guys could take one of these and pass it, before we talk about.
Yeah, we're kind of jumping around.
Yeah, yeah. What page were you?
Move it.
Are we?
Well, I know that.
On education, because now we're at promotional.
Let's go back, let's go back to.
Okay.
Memberships and education. So, the reason that I printed this out and brought this, okay, stop right there.
Yes.
So, I don't know if everybody knows, but this is from the Florida League of Cities website, so on here, we have Florida League of Cities dues plus newspaper, Suncoast League of Cities, I'm going to skip the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, we have Mayor's Council of Pinellas County and Florida League of Mayors, all four, I don't know if you guys know, that all four of those organizations are Florida League of Cities, all of them.
Yes, they are.
And so, I mean, right there, that's a lot of money. Now, I don't know what's different from the Florida League of Mayors versus the Mayor's Council of Pinellas County, other than, you know, networking, if there is something that we're getting from that, I'd love to know more about it, so I can better kind of consider it, but I think, you know, being a member of the Suncoast League and maybe the Florida League of Cities, because we do get the ability to participate in the FGFOA, we have, you know, we have dollars that are in insurance funds through the Florida League of Cities, and so, I do believe that it's important to participate in that. I do appreciate their ethics seminars annually, and, well, when the Form Six seminar happened. I do like EMO, I think that's a great resource for our newer council members, but some of these other memberships, I wanted us to reconsider. I don't know why only the Mayor's Council of Pinellas County and not any other county in the state of Florida is on this list. I don't know. I don't know if there was something that happened long ago that, do you know, Dan?
Well, the Mayor's, well, I didn't realize that Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council was two thousand dollars. Number one, I didn't realize it was that high. Number two, the Mayor's Council of Pinellas County, that's actually the county commissioners. They actually, it's, it's run by the Florida League of Cities, they manage it. The, the funds that we pay all the mayors around the municipalities in Pinellas County that pay seven hundred and fifty dollars, that, they manage it, but it really is just a.
What do they do with it? Do they, is it just for lunches?
Well, you, didn't you go last year with me?
I went to one of them.
One with Eric.
But I, you know, I didn't know if there's more that I'm missing, like, if it's just like lunching and network opportunities, I'm like, okay, I have lunch and network opportunities, or I could give it to, you know, Suda, to have, you know, more funds for Opal Theater Productions.
It's basically an educational tool, so we understand what other municipalities are doing.
Yeah.
So, when we go there, we network, we understand what the other cities are doing that we might, could be doing to change, or to make new ideas.
Do you think there's some overlap at all between the mayors, the two Mayor's Councils and the Suncoast League? Because you've been.
Now, the Suncoast League is all council members.
Right.
It's just not mayors.
Right.
It's, it's everyone, anybody can go, from any municipality can, can go to that.
Right, well, and any, any city can have any elected official be their representative for Suncoast versus.
Yes.
Obviously, Mayor's Council and Florida League of Mayors is for only.
Right, so.
And plus, other elected officials can go to the Suncoast League of Cities meetings or luncheons.
Yeah, like we went.
Now, it's, it's funny that you, you mentioned that, because usually in July, they have a Saturday training session, the Suncoast League would have a Saturday from eight-thirty AM till around one, and they're not doing that this year, which I wanted you to go to.
Yeah, I remember you were saying they weren't doing something else.
I, I was, I'm really disappointed, because that was like a opportunity for you to understand what the Florida League of Cities is about, the Suncoast League of Cities, and other municipalities, so it's.
I'm just wondering if over time, some of these organizations have changed and are becoming duplicative, such that maybe we should consider, you know, sitting out for a year, so that we can gain better perspective, or if we are actually missing out on something, but, you know, for four hundred and seventy-five dollars, you know, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm looking for the knowledge to make the informed decision, you know, should that four hundred and seventy-five dollars help fund the requested increase from Neighborly Care Network to provide those meals on wheels for our local seniors?
So, it's a good question, so the Florida League of Cities of Mayors.
Okay.
That is really at the conference. That, that's at the conference in August.
Happens on the front end of.
And the League of Cities.
So, that's the day, the Thursday of?
It's a Wednesday.
Oh, a Wednesday.
So, it's the day before, where they have their board meetings, and all the mayors come in from around the state.
What is Oldsmar, like, what do we get back from?
I go, I go to the Florida League of Mayors board meetings, and I attend, it's, it's wonderful, it's a great educational. it's wonderful. It's a great educational.
What, what ultimately is the outcome of the board meeting, though, I think might be kind of.
Yeah, like I'm trying to cut to the chase, like, other than networking.
What direct benefit to Oldsmar, other than you attending there and learning from the other mayors? What direct benefit, what, what tangible thing can we put our hands on that says?
Maybe it used to be.
This is why this happened, because I attended this and that's why it was worthwhile.
Well, you attend the insurance for the Florida League of Cities.
But not by any stretch of the imagination, by any portion of this budget.
No, I know.
Right.
Do you, when you go to those, that opportunity, do you learn anything? Do you think it's well educational for you?
I chair the board, so, which funds the municipal investment trust.
And I'm a board member for the Florida League of Mayors.
Which we had to utilize this year, though, previously. So.
I don't, I think we've been a Florida League of Mayors, I don't know how long. I think we've.
But I mean, I can, I can discuss the merits of me chairing the board of the municipal investment trust. I think the question is, and I think it's a fair one, after the board meeting, what's brought back to Oldsmar that's tangible? And so what my point was by saying what I just said was, that investment trust works in concert with the, with the insurance trust, which Oldsmar had to utilize this year. So that's where the direct benefit of me attending those, being a part of that.
They had a claim.
Because we had a claim. And so any questions that needed to be addressed that may have come up in those board meetings, I was there. It had to be used. And it, it wasn't a part of the Florida League of Cities Conference. They have four meetings a year that I have to attend in order to go through what the league is doing and that investment trust is doing to make sure that the financials are still in order to fund everybody throughout the state. But tangibly, it directly impacted Oldsmar specifically this year. So that's the answer to that question. Um, it's 475 bucks, it, and so I understand. But I think council members, Nap and Gannon, what I was trying to articulate, because I think I understand what you're asking, is what's brought back here? Wait, wait. What would, what, what would Oldsmar miss if the 475 was put back into the charitable organization pot?
So both, both Mayor's Council and the Florida League of Mayors is basically a legislative opportunity to discuss issues that are going on in our city.
Okay.
So what, we can find out what other cities are doing around the state, whether it's, um, Form 6, Form 1, or if it's, um, some legislative bill that we're discussing, uh, how it would affect our city. That's what we discuss there in our board meetings.
Okay.
So if you want to take that out, we won't have that communication any longer.
So.
Again, I, again, I was attempting to articulate.
I don't have anything, whether you said about, like, insurance stuff.
No, for sure. But yeah, that was, yeah, your question for me, so I wanted to make sure I addressed it. But as council members, Nap and Gannon, we're, we're discussing, I think that's, I was just trying to put some color on, on what they were asking.
So I, I, you did, you did kind of articulate what I was saying. But this isn't necessarily for me about, you know, what Mayor Soraki gets out of it. It, it doesn't, it's not about, like, asking you what you brought back. I'm not saying that. I'm asking.
That's fair.
I'm asking, because we're asking these charitable organizations to tell us, how many people do they serve? What purpose does it bring? Like, when I think of the objective, which is a good objective, of learning what other cities are doing, how current legislation impacts us, I think of the 30-page memo that Tom Trask sends us at the beginning of session and updates throughout session and advises us of what bills could potentially affect us, what the financial impact is. I'm also thinking about the, um, Florida League of Cities email that comes to us by virtue of that membership that has calls to action. Hey, call your, call your local delegate, um, you know, this bill is important, pay attention. And I know we get that through the Florida League of Cities dues. Um, so I'm, I'm looking to eliminate duplication of some of that information. I recognize that a lot of these are great opportunities, um, to network. But at this budgetary juncture, in, in my opinion, you know, would I rather have, um, that information or, um, consensus information gathering through an electronic source, through different types of training sessions and give that $750 and that $475 to a local organization that I know is giving back to this community? Yeah, I would. That's, that's just me, okay? So this is, this is not about, you know, what have each of us individually done. The reason I did pose the question to the mayors, because he's the only one up here who's been mayor. So I don't know what they do at those two particular things. I did go to the Suncoast League of Cities, um, lunch the other day. And they do talk about, for example, the injunction about, um, Form 6 versus Form 1. They talked about, um, the bill regarding, um, short-term rentals and how that might affect us. They talked about permitting and how the bill regarding quicker turnaround and permitting might affect local cities, but it doesn't really affect us because the county took back our permitting. So, you know, again, great information, nothing that I didn't already know. I do think there is some benefit in networking with our local Suncoast League. I'm just looking at the, the entire Florida League of Mayors, that, that first day of the conference. I don't know, you know? I'm looking for input from you guys to see what you would rather fund. That's where I saw some room.
So let's talk about the Tampa Bay Regional Council. That's two grand.
That's a lot. That's a lot. And there was discussion at the Suncoast League about regional MPO, so.
Yeah, they talked about the MPO.
What do you think, Andrew?
Well, as, well, the, the regional MPO thing, that's through Ford Pinellas.
Yeah.
That's separately addressed through that. As far as Regional Planning Council, that's where there is a lot of collaborative effort going on, primarily in the, in the vein of resiliency, of being able to fund the staff that is working on the planning surrounding those types of projects. So that's where I think there's pretty substantial value in being a member of that council, because that's not, that's not even just our county. That's our to, greater Tampa Bay area that has a lot of impacts of those folks are meeting at those, we're having, having our meetings, but there is staff that is actively working on the planning activities around projects that impact our Bay Area, our coastline directly, as well as from the broader region. So there, there is a tangible benefit, I think, to be realized through that. There's outcomes of us voting on those, myself or whoever that representative is, voting on those budgets for monies that get spent that can impact us and/or other municipalities in the region versus kind of my point or the question of the outcomes of the, the League of Mayors or the Mayor's Council. Sorry to cir, be circling back to that is, like, what, what action do those bodies take that then cause some direct benefit or, or, or anything else directly to our city versus other organizations that are out there? Is it just we're passing kind of resolutions or we support this type of thing that ultimately is just sending a message to our representatives? Maybe there is value in that, but that's kind of my question is what actions do those bodies take that then have either an absolute direct result from that action or a couple steps down the road have some sort of impact back to our city? But I, I'm personally, I see, I know that value for TBRPC is, is higher than some of these others. But there's obviously for our area, a whole lot of issues related to planning for resiliency that we're not going to get out of the way of anytime soon.
Well, the Mayor's Council of Pinellas County, that's the county commissioners. They, they attend, they, they split it up each, each meeting every month. They, well, now it's only quarterly. Excuse me, it's only four times a year now. And they attend that.
Hmm.
So that's county commissioners and any.
And all the mayors.
Of Pinellas County.
Tarpon Springs, Safety Harbor, all the beach areas, the mayors. That's, that's the Mayor Council, the Mayor's Council of Pinellas County. And you were there.
I'm not lying, I'm just telling you.
Doug, come on up.
Just real quick, just because I was mayor for six years, I think, I don't know about the, the Florida League of Mayors. I never attended any of that. But I can tell you that the, um, Pinellas County mayors, um, not every meeting, I don't, I didn't know you're meeting quarterly, but they are very effective because collectively of all the cities, you know, we have a pretty big voice. Um, one case in point was, uh, somebody brought it up, I can't remember who it was, and we went to Sheriff Goltiere about, uh, the blue law back whenever that was, where you could change the alcohol drinking to 11 o'clock on Sunday. Sheriff Goltiere said, yes, he supports it because it's unanimous, it makes it uniform across the, the county.
Across the county.
So we went to the county commission. The county commission said, take it back to your cities. I brought it back here. We talked about it as a council and unanimously we voted. And so that happens, not all the time, but it certainly does, especially when you have, like, the House of Representatives, when we were talking about, um, home rule, you, you were part of that and what it really means and how it affects a different city than our city, you know? So I think it's, yeah, is, is it some networking? Sure. But I think it can be very effective if you have the right speakers. So I apologize.
No, I'm glad you came up.
No, I'm looking for information.
Yeah, feedback. And, but to Councilmember Gannon's point, and, and just to clarify, Mayor, I've never minded. I, I didn't have anything written down on, on this sheet when I went.
Me either.
Okay.
And so I've never minded, only because it's, well, what if there is something that's going on that maybe somebody in a different part of the state had gone through? Um, when we did, um, the vertical oyster gardens, I was at the, um, FLC meeting that I had to be at, but I let everyone know, like, hey, this is what we're doing. Well, man, that's a great idea. Well, we do this here and we do that here. And so you cultivate ideas. It wasn't through the official meeting that I had to be at. I understand that. Um, but if we're looking for money that's better suited for charitable organizations, I understand Councilmember Gannon's point. But when I, again, ran through this list, I was like, oh, I didn't realize that's what they cost. And then I went on to the next agenda item. So it wasn't, I didn't see any cuts to make. All the arguments are well, are well-founded. Um, but just to articulate my position better, it was, okay, well, what specifically is brought back here? Well, maybe it's like, well, I, I didn't get, you know, a, a brand-new fire hydrant or a stop sign, like, you know, what are you asking for here, Vice Mayor? And I understand your point. I was just like, well, I'm just trying to figure out, okay, um, what specifically are we getting from it? And if it is, well, if I don't go, then maybe I can seek those other mayors out. But then maybe I'm kind of guessing that their cities are going through that thing. This brings us all into one place and I can discuss it. But again, didn't cross my mind. So I just want to go on record.
And I have one other point I want to bring up that Doug, you brought up. I remember when you were mayor, you brought up that 1% sales tax that they wanted to add on to the PSTA. You were on the PSTA board at the time and you were also at the Mayor's Council of Pinellas. And you, at the meeting, brought that up, how important it was. And you, you actually did a great presentation on that, because I knew nothing about it. And that was another part of the, the Pinellas County Mayor's Council and PSTA.
And to, to that point, I apologize. I'll, I'll sit down.
No, you're fine.
But, but I think because collectively, we all serve on a lot of different boards, I think we bring some of that knowledge to another board, whether it's the Mayor's Council or whatever it is. We may bring some of that knowledge from PSTA to share with, you know, the body. The, the, the state mayor thing, I think that's, you know, I think we're really effective. The best form of government is that closest to the people and Pinellas County mayors, I think, really. It's, it's, because we're unique with, you know, all the municipalities, so.
Sounds like, it sounds like we don't necessarily have consensus on this page, then. So let's look at the promotional activities. I know we changed the awards from that trophy to.
Clark has something for that.
Yeah, you want?
The picture. So I think.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we did just recently do that change where we're now giving the framed artwork to the awardees. So that, um, we believe that cost is going down. So we had originally budgeted the 2,300 for that, which is what we did in previous fiscal years. And that cost is a lot less for the framed artwork. So we could decrease that line item to 1,000.
So that gives us, oh, decrease it by 1,000 or decrease it to 1,000?
To 1,000.
Oh, wow, okay.
You're now at 3110.
Okay.
So 1,300?
Okay.
I'm at 3610. You're at 3110?
Did you, are you including the food from council? Where, what's your $500 difference?
400 for TBRPC.
Uh-huh.
900 for EMO, so that's 1,300. 1010 for NLC, so that's 2310. Plus 1,300. Drumroll, please.
Were you at 6,000 off the travel, though? Or 6,500? Because that's, I think that's that $500 difference is.
Six we agreed on, right?
Oh, you're 500, you're right. So the, the food's still in there. Okay, you're right.
Okay.
3110.
3110? On the plus end.
They're written down, but I didn't have it in an equation.
So through all the people that didn't follow that.
Based on the, based on, no, 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 no. We're, we're in the black by three.
How much?
We're up 3,000.
3100.
All right, that's what I like to hear.
That we could give back to charitable organizations.
That's what I like to hear.
Above what they received last year.
Right.
Okay.
If nothing else changes.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes.
Nope.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Please. It will be, I promise. Um, Oldsmar Cares, of course, is in Oldsmar. Does, now Mattie Williams receives funds from Oldsmar because they help our people here as well. Does the City of Safety Harbor in turn, do we know, Janet, do you know that, how much they give back to Oldsmar Cares?
Jay, come on up.
To the.
Yeah, so we can hear you. Please, thank you.
So the City of Safety Harbor gives us funding also, um, as, and so, but what you're asking is, do, the City of Safety Harbor does not, does not give funds to Oldsmar Cares if any, um, there's, at times we've exchanged, um, items or whatever. If we've, they've had more funding for more stuff, we'll do that kind of thing. But there's not been, they've not come and requested funding actually to the City of Safety Harbor, is my knowledge. Is that correct? Have you ever come in?
That's correct. We don't provide financial assistance to Safety Harbor residents, just food and clothing.
Right, so it's food and clothing. So that's the difference.
How much does the City of Safety Harbor provide to Mattie Williams?
Uh, 45,000 for, um, normal operations and then 15,000 for, uh, home repair program.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? So will staff do your little magic with your spreadsheet for us? Will you?
Take Steve's numbers.
Proportionately.
Did you write it down, Steve?
Yeah.
I thought you wrote it in pen.
See the blue stuff?
Garrett's probably been following the whole thing.
If we take that surplus and put it toward.
Right. So when we were finished discussing, if we, if we knocked everything back to what it was last year, took away our travel budget, and it's, well, not in its entirety, it would be 6,000 because we'd still need the $500 for the food at the events.
Can't give up the food.
I'm aware of your position on that, Mayor.
He's coming over.
He's already got the formula.
He's coming over.
So we had, we had 500 that we still needed to account for.
And we're, but are we giving the chamber the 10 grand?
Uh, no, we're not there yet. So we got the 500 to account for. So then we took away the $400 for the TBRPC.
Summit, yep.
We took away $900 for EMO, leaving the 600 for the anticipated two new members of council in March of 2025.
He already got you.
Yes, he does.
We took away the 1010 for the NLC, which left us with 2310. Kristen said we can decrease by 1,300. So that got us to 3,110 that we have additional to.
Bingo.
And as Councilmember Grimes just said, bingo. That's right there.
That math checks.
He's been punching it the entire time.
Yes, he has.
Well, that was, and Garrett, thank you, because we were all over the place on this one.
He's even got the page numbers. I was like, science.
Amazing, amazing.
He knew what was going to happen.
Scroll off a little bit to the.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, there we go. Oh, so you've, okay, so 80% of requests, 21, 20.
We can ignore this. That was just, you're seeing my working draft, so.
Yes.
I have a hobby of doing 80% of requests.
That was my starting draft, is your working draft.
All right.
So I suppose my question is, is, is that the number that we are to work with? Or is there another option? I am not sure of that answer, so that's why I posed the question.
But we still have our page of the memberships. Did we come to complete agreement on that page?
We did not have consensus on that page.
No, we didn't, we didn't realize. Well, I mean, right now, right now, based on what we've discussed, is if we were willing to say. if we were willing to say, we're gonna give everything, match what we did last year, that's the $81,500. And then we've come up with an additional $3110 that we could add to that.
Correct.
That obviously still leaves us short from the total requests of $95,000. Essentially at $84,610.
And remember, may I ask, may I remind the council that this is just a budget work session? So these are target figures.
Scroll up again, Garrett, $3110. Can you hide the organizations on line nine?
Rose nine.
Through line, or rose nine to seventeen?
Absolutely.
There we go.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Move, move the excess information.
Yeah.
I mean, what's obvious, the largest gap there is the chamber's request. Everything else is not far different from what we budgeted last year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Come on up.
A little redundant because you've already kind of figured it in with everything. But, you know, like last year, we requested 25. And then, you know, I took 10 of that off to make it 15. We're kind of in the same situation now, and you guys have done it on your own before that. But I would just say with ours, at that, at 15, don't, don't use any of the $3,000 extra that you have that you just came up with or anything else for the, for the chamber side of it. I would utilize that for other nonprofits.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Very nice.
Thank you.
You just mentioned that now, I thought, so you were mentioning it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
That leaves three that have a difference from fiscal of last year, or fiscal, current fiscal to next fiscal. That have a gap.
That weird $6136 number.
$500, $1,500, and $1,600. Almost is very close to $3100. It's off by $500-ish.
Well, if we address those two mayor things, there's the $500.
You could...
No.
You could match, well, you could, you could match everybody's funding request.
Andrea, $3630?
All right, I'll give up the food.
$3636. Are you at $3636?
I'll give up the $500 food.
I didn't, I didn't add it, I was just ballparking.
Where's the food?
But yeah, that sounds about right.
Wait, wait, wait.
It's on page 337.
We're off by, we're close if we give up the food.
For council work sessions?
About $500.
I'll eat before I come here.
Oh, I'll bring the food.
I do have an idea, I have an idea, I have an idea.
We have...
I have an idea.
Vice Mayor has an idea.
Vice Mayor, the floor.
I have an idea.
You have the floor.
Do we need council shirts this year?
I never got a shirt this year.
You didn't get?
No, I don't even have a shirt this year.
You didn't get your shirt?
I've never had a shirt.
Well, it's, it's, it's budgeted for $100 for each council member and mayor to get a shirt.
I'll give up my shirts, I don't need them.
I'll give up my shirts.
I never got a shirt this year, so maybe I can reach into, reach into this fiscal year budget. I think it's on the way, it's in the mail, I've been told.
Again, if you, if you have new people who don't have old shirts.
Correct.
I was a new person who didn't have a shirt, and I've never had a shirt.
You've never had a shirt?
Never had a shirt. Ask, have I ever had a shirt? I've never asked for one.
Between the shirts and the food for the council budget work sessions?
That's a thousand dollars.
Can we do this, you guys?
That's fine, but if we take away the shirts, we've only got a $26 difference.
We can't leave the new council members naked.
Well, I'm just...
Sorry, somebody needed to laugh.
Yeah.
No one's been laughing.
Are you gonna be okay with not food? No food?
No, we can't, no, but still.
But again...
It comes full circle, right?
Put it in their pocket.
We got food.
Just hit up Thornton's, right? We'll give Thornton's a heads up.
Put it in their pocket.
Drop off some subs.
Oh my God, this is nuts.
So every, every ask goes up except the chambers.
Well, they're at 20. They're at 20, right?
No. Jason's saying if we were to stuck, stick with everyone, matching everyone's funding from last year as a starting point, that, and that whatever additional funds that we come up with, that he would prefer that any of those additional funds go to the other requesters, correct?
That's correct.
Before any would be potentially realized by the chamber.
And then we take away the food, so the future council members aren't naked, to borrow Councilmember Gannon's. Just wanted the people to laugh, Katie.
I'm just saying...
There's still a negligible $26.
How much?
$26?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's $3636, right?
Mm-hmm, $3636, so $526.
Match the requests.
Yes, so $526.
Who do I need to write a check to for $36?
It's 20, it was 26, but you can, I don't know.
26.
Yeah, it's $526 is what we're getting.
I think we're good, guys.
We're good, yes, $26.
All right.
I don't enjoy this.
Kristen, you have anything else? Thank you.
All right. We made it.
We did it. Thank you, guys, reach out seriously.
I think, um...
Excuse me, Mayor, please.
We just want to, we just want to make sure that we're confirming all the changes.
Okay.
All right, let's do it.
And with the final numbers.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, so, let's see. So for the education and training, we are decreasing, I believe, the $1,500 by $900 for the emo.
Yep.
And then, was that the only, and then the $1,010 for the NLC?
Yes.
That's correct.
Okay, and then everything else on the page was staying the same?
Yes.
No, no, the $400.
Resiliency summit comes off too.
Okay, and the resiliency summit.
Okay, you have those three. Okay.
I have page numbers.
Garrett's got you, he's got it all.
Yes, we have a condensed list right here. Okay, so the travel, we can go back one. So we are going to be reducing the mayor and council members' travel budget to zero for a total of $6,000, plus the food, so that's $6,500. And then we just went over the education and training changes. And then, well, no, no changes here.
Correct.
Okay. And then promotional activities line item, the change was to minus $1,300 on awards, was the one change.
Yep.
Okay.
More the shirts.
Well, you still have...
Oh, and the, what was the final decision on the shirts? We kept it, correct?
Keeping the shirts.
We're keeping the shirts, okay, thank you.
I think between the shirts and the food, it can be fungible throughout the year, depending on who gets a shirt.
You get to eat and you get a shirt. Don't get both.
Wow.
Wasn't the char mahoney dinner on here?
The maroni dinner used to be.
I didn't see it, it's gone now.
We took it out last year so that each of us would buy our own ticket instead of doing the table.
Did anybody go this year?
I went, and I paid.
I didn't, I was out of town. Good, okay, good.
Okay.
I know it's painful, y'all, but it matters, it matters a lot. I think it matters a lot to the people who are sitting out there, who depend on this for funding.
All right.
Even if it's 500 bucks. It's a microphone, it's, it's another meal, it matters.
We did it. Kristen, are you okay? Are we all set? Do we have any other comments or questions from anybody?
Felicia, please.
Yes. Okay, so let's see. Okay, so that was, I believe we ended up going through all other agenda items two through five. Let's see if we have anything else. We're just making sure we don't have any other numbers to go over.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Fine, take your time.
Take your time.
We're just gonna quickly read into the record the requests that council is going to be approving for the charitable donations for this year. So that would be $25,000, or $27,000 for Oldsmar Cares, $25,000 for Mattie Williams, $25,000 for Upper Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce Special Event Support.
$15,000, did you just say 25?
25.
For the chamber?
Yeah.
15.
15?
15.
Sorry, Jason, sorry, Mark.
$7,000, that's right. $7,000 for Oldsmar Friends of the Arts, thank you, Vice Mayor, I appreciate that.
I'll have it anytime, bud.
$60, $6,136 for the Neighborly Care Network, $3,000 for the Holiday Sharing Fund, and $2,000 for the Chamber's Education Foundation. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
So, I have, what about the chamber? Are we gonna have Celebrate Oldsmar?
Yes.
No problems.
I'm not sure.
All right, thank you.
Next year?
Thank you.
35 seconds.
Stop, don't.
35-second fireworks. Boom, done.
Well, we can probably find $26 for 45 seconds, maybe.
Yes, we can all chip in for that. All right.
Okay.
Put it in the kitty.
So if that's all for the budget portion of this work session, that will end the budget portion of this work session. And then we will go on to the annual review of the council proceeding, council rules and procedures.
All right, thank you. Do you mind if I start, council? I have one suggestion and one change that I'd like to share.
Sure.
Under page 343, which is item two, regular meetings, we, I was wondering if you wanted to change our, and we don't have to do this right away, we can leave it at discussion, but I'd like to change our time to 6:00 PM instead of 7:00 PM. I want to just bring that up, if you wanted to open it up for discussion. I, a lot of other municipalities around Pinellas County, they all start at 6:00, some start at 5:00. St. Pete starts at, like, 1:00. I don't know if you would benefit, or you'd be able to, bless you, would be able to get here at 6:00. I just wanted to bring that to council for discussion, from 7:00 to 6:00.
I will say for me, it's difficult for me to get here at 6:00 for work sessions because of my job.
Okay.
Ditto.
Swing in the, swing in the family gig turnaround from dinner to...
Okay, well, I wanted to bring it, I just wanted to ask if you...
Well, and that's important, because we, we're supposed to review this every year, so, you know.
It may change.
It may change.
For others' needs in the future.
I just thought, you know, with you guys having, you have kids, for me, it's great, I can get, I can get here. But if you guys have any kids, I wasn't sure, you know, feeding the kids and doing your...
Between, between work and the transition window that we do get by it being at 7:00 is far better.
Yeah, it's the hours.
I've found, and I'm likely to get agreement on this, but between work and my kids coming home, that's when I get to see them, because most of the time, if not all, when I get home, they're in bed.
Yeah.
So that's, by the time they get home from school or from camp, that's when I see them, in that gap time. So if that got truncated to a half an hour, then I'd still be gone and I'd still be in bed, so I would miss all of that. So it's actually beneficial for me, because I have kids, that it starts at 7:00.
The only reason why I brought up to you is staff is here, you know, staff is here till 7:00 waiting. So I just wanted to bring it up, but I don't have a problem with it, I just wanted to...
Another thing, I mean, that would be an interesting question for the public, like a, I don't, I don't know, some kind of a polling question, because I know, you know, there are people who come after work to, to council meetings.
True.
To, you know, be here for open forum and whatnot, and I, obviously we can't start at 1:00, but, you know, I don't know if 6:00 o'clock would, would cause an issue for people who come. That would be, I would be interested in the public input on that.
And we are here, you know, we have work sessions, our work sessions are at 6:00, so that's why I wanted to bring it up.
Yeah.
All right, that's all I had, anybody have other changes you would like to recommend? Councilor Gannon, go ahead.
Go ahead.
On page, on page 345...
What, 345?
Page 345, where it says, "All persons in attendance at a council meeting, public hearing, or work session." We should just call it a meeting, because they're all meetings. We shouldn't have, like, enumerate, emergency meeting.
Aren't those capitalized? No, those all have their own, regular work and special, they all have their own definitions.
Yeah, and I think we should just use the word "meeting." And then the only other thing was on the annual review number, the last thing on page 357, to just change it to, that we should review it during a meeting.
What item?
Or a work session.
357, oh, 357?
On the last page, my only other suggestion would be to change item 17 to permit annual review by the city council and city attorney during a meeting or a work session held on or before July 1 of each year. Just so that we can do it at a meeting if we only have one thing or nothing to change, so we don't have to schedule a separate work session because it says "work session."
I don't have a problem with that.
No, I agree, I have it written down, too.
That's all I got.
Counsel, Vice Mayor?
Sure, so on page 343, paragraph 3, work sessions, since we have the city attorney here. Tom, if you could please shed some light on how any two members of the council sign a written notice to be filed with the city manager's office works in practice a work session called?
So in practice, it would be basically just an email or a voice request coming to the city manager. She would take note of that, and if there was a second, then that's, at that point, that, that has been met. That provision has been met.
Yeah, it just, it's written kind of strangely, so I just wanted to make sure. And then from 343 to the top of 344, at least 48 hours before a special meeting, it's the final sentence on 343. Called in this manner, notice and time, place and purpose of the meeting shall be posted on the city's website. So it shall be posted on the website, Tom. It can be posted elsewhere, but shall be posted on the website. Would that need to be revised to say, it shall be posted on the website?
It's like, at a minimum.
It may be posted elsewhere, it was just me reading words and writing down things.
Yeah, so we can add anything that you want with regard to the notice given to the public.
Right, I think without it, I mean, just the omission of it, I think allows for it, is my point. It shall be posted on the website, but there's, there's no prohibition that it can be posted elsewhere, I guess is...
That's correct.
Okay, so, all right, then I'm all right. Then emergency meetings right below that, is the same two members' question that I had. Under paragraph 5, sub C, and Tom, why is the rule necessary for the 11:00 PM? I, I don't, if we're, if we're going, and we can adjourn anyway, right? Why is this, is it an archaic rule, I suppose is what I'm asking, that we have, we've, we've been here before, we have to stop the meeting, and I've seen you say, hey, you know, at some point you're gonna need to move to extend this meeting. And then we, we have to do it. But I've never understood, I guess, the need for it, I guess, is if the meeting's going and going and going, and we have the power to adjourn because it's getting too late, why is this rule necessary?
Well, I've seen it work to the counselor commission's advantage numerous times.
Okay.
Because of the fact that they are geared towards a meeting going to 11:00.
Uh huh.
They have made commitments to the meeting ending at 11:00.
Okay.
And there may be situations where you just want the ability to stop it.
Okay.
So that you don't have to feel committed to continue on.
Okay.
Because we know that our best work is not done at midnight.
Right.
Our best work is done earlier in the evening. And then frankly, it gives the public the opportunity to understand that there is a high likelihood that it will not be continued past 11:00 o'clock.
Okay.
So just to kind of bookend it.
So page three forty-six, public hearings other than quasi judicial proceedings, is it worthwhile to add a specificity as to the five-minute discussion time for the members of the public speaking?
It's three minutes.
The pub, that's for quasi judicial, this is for public hearings other than quasi judicial?
Yeah.
Right, so is it worthwhile to add the five-minute provision, because the quasi judicial that has the three-minute provision, but it, and it's been custom in practice for us to allow the five during public hearings other than quasi judicial hearings?
And there's not been often times where we've ran in, into that circumstance where somebody's speaking and either getting to five minutes or, or going beyond. But obviously, there have been certain hot button issues in the past and, and other things that could come, come up and again in the future, where I think it would be wise to have that more explicitly stated. Yeah.
More specifically stated. I'm done, that's all I had, so, what, does worthwhile or no, I mean, leave it as is? It's, it's, it's worked that way so far, I just didn't know if it was something that we wanted to give a little thought to, either way.
Tom, do you, do you think we should change that?
Add a provision add to the time period, I think it's, it's a very good suggestion.
Thank you.
I have a microphone now, I think it's very.
You gave away that microphone too quick.
Well, I got the, give me the microphone. Down from the lat and down there, so I was just trying to reciprocate.
So, yeah, if Tom, I, I think that's a really good point, Vice Mayor, if, and especially if the city attorney agrees, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, just say, I mean, so then it's there, and then, you know.
Like the eleven P.M. is there.
Per our rules of procedure, it's, it's specifically five minutes.
Is it five minutes or three minutes?
Whatever you want to make it.
Quasi judicial is three.
Uh-huh.
Public hearings.
Is five?
It's, well, it's.
Okay.
It always has been.
Always.
Okay. Got it.
Quasi judicial says three.
Other than. Okay. Great.
Now you can pass the mic.
No, no, don't, don't bother, don't bother.
Gonna come back.
You know it's gonna come back.
I did have a clarifying question, back to the special meetings under four, the on the city website discussion, so the agendas are actually posted on the iCompass portal, which is linked off of the city's website, so it's technically not on the city's website, but it can be accessed through the city's website through a link, so I just wanted to put that clarification out there.
Okay.
So what you're saying, when you get that email, you click that link, that agenda item is linked to the website, correct?
Well, it's, it's on the i, it's on iCompass website, that's our agenda provider. So it's through their website, and then there's a link off of our website, when you go to agendas and agendas under council, city council, it links you to, you go straight to the iCompass website.
So the link is posted on our website?
The link.
Okay.
Yes.
That's fine, I think that's fine with me.
Good enough for me.
Okay.
All right, Councilmember Nap, do you have anything?
Just, just one thing.
What page?
Uh, it's not on a page.
Oh, there you go.
Going rogue.
Yeah, going rogue. This would be as it relates to public open houses, which I know aren't official meetings by us, so I don't know, and Tom, feel free to jump in if, if you think we're getting out of line here. But, uh, my thought is to kind of protect the integrity of, of public open houses to where if any or all council members are present, where really the intended function of that exercise is to kind of receive open and unhindered feedback from the public, it's then being channeled through staff or through some other agency, you know, say it's a third party that's helping organize an event. I, I, I just kind of want to probe the council to see the temperature of, do we feel like there's, there's value in us giving, getting our public feedback from that lectern and that lectern only versus having the ability to be out there at these events when they take place? So that's just kind of, I know it's come up in, in conversation previously, but just from my position, I feel like we're gonna get feedback that can be properly processed. People don't necessarily feel like they have to gravitate to one person versus another if we're present at those types of events, so.
All right, let's, let's, let's open that up for discussion, is it okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, let's start with Vice Mayor. Do you have anything you want to comment on it, because I got some comments too.
I'm certain, um, I, I've just always made it a practice of mine not to go. Just, so, I, whether we get it from the lectern, from other sources, the open houses, I think are for the public and the staff to interact regarding what's being presented to them. Um, so I've always just said, I, I don't go, and, and my answer, I think I can, but I just don't. It, that's just the way I've approached it.
Sure.
Councilor Grimes? Oh, okay. Yep.
Um, I, thank you, Mayor. Um, I personally make it a practice not to go either, and my, the reasoning behind my thinking is I don't want a situation where I'm near another council member and they hear something, and then we both heard something that you guys didn't hear, and just, it's just, it's just better for me if I hear it at the same time a, as everyone else, and everyone hears the same information at the same time. So that it's not me relating, uh, a, oh, well, somebody, so-and-so said this, I'd rather hear it, you know, at that moment, I think us being there creates a potential for, um, sunshine, sunshine issues, they're starting to whisper now.
Yeah.
And also, for, well, for quasi judicial hearings and for public hearings, it literally has to come from there, in the lectern, I'm pointing to the lectern, uh, for us to consider it as evidence in making those decisions as a governing board, which is probably what Tom's about to say.
You want to say something, Tom?
I do, I'm very, very concerned, um, you know, when we have these open hall or town hall meetings, even though they're open to the public and the public can appear, the three requirements of the sunshine law are not met, you remember the three things are that it be open to the public, that reasonable notice be given, but the key here is, is minutes are taken, okay? There's no minutes taken. Therefore, it would be a violation of the sunshine law for two or more members of the council to be at that meeting and openly discuss something, will eventually come back before you for a decision to be made. So you put yourself in a very difficult position. That doesn't mean that council members can't sit in the back of the room and listen, but once you open up your mouth, then it just, it changes the dynamic of what is happening, and so I would not recommend that you do that, otherwise what it's gonna do is, is it's gonna require that minutes be taken to protect you.
At the open houses, to protect us. And the city.
Right.
So, Councilmember Nap, I wanted to say that your suggestion, you know, was great that we got to talk about it, but, thank you, that's all I wanted to say. All right, is there anybody else that wants to mention anything else?
Just want to compliment everyone tonight on not saying podium, but saying lectern, that means a lot to me.
No, I think we had a great meeting, wonderful, great job, guys.
Um, Councilmember Nap, were you suggesting that we add that to the rules of procedure?
I, I wanted to probe the temperature of, should we consider it as a rule or not, or we take our chances to where if there, there is anyone that is inclined to attend those types of events?
So in other words, is it?
Taking the risk versus, and, and I guess, Tom is, can that be a rule at all, or are we in a very gray area where, there where it's kind of not enforceable?
No, you could definitely create a rule to reflect that, that it, that you've adopted a policy or a rule that says that you will not attend them, or if you do attend them, that you will remain silent, and you will not subject yourself to question-answer type situation. So it really puts you in an, um, in a, in an odd place if you get there, because you're gonna want to answer questions of your resident.
People are gonna want to talk to us.
They're gonna want to talk to you.
Yeah.
Um, and if more than one of you attend, then, then the sunshine law issue comes into play.
Right, and, and I guess kind of, almost kind of on the, the line of the conduit thing, right, is somebody might say something to one of us, say, obviously the hypothetical of two people at an event, right, and somebody says something to one of us, or we say something to them, and then what was said by one gets then said through that person to another council member, right?
Well, I was just talking to Councilmember Nap who said, blah, blah, blah.
That's, that's certainly a, a scenario that could play out.
Right, and.
And be a problem.
You're often cautioned when you go to these meetings relative to the sunshine law, that you cannot use a liaison to transfer information from one council member to the next, correct? It's a violation of the law.
Does it belong in the rules of procedure or in the council member handbook? Is it a suggestion or a requirement?
Do we want to really go there? I, I wouldn't go to, I, I would not go to the open house, personally. I went to the open house for the roundabout, and I, I will never do that again.
Hey, but it sounds like we have consensus on including it as.
It was crazy.
Is it, is it worthwhile for future councils that it's in, it's if there's a, if there's a public.
Providing a layer of protection or not?
One council member, either the mayor or another, or one other council member, well, I wouldn't want the mayor to designate, but it, it's, it's and, or if it's first come, first served, but one member of council.
Who would like to go?
Whether it be mayor, can notify the city manager. And once that spot is taken, that's it, something along those lines, I mean, I didn't, I didn't spell that out very artfully, but.
Present the issues that he spoke of.
Not if only one of us.
Only if there's one, it's not an issue.
Would you want to go?
No, I, I'm just, I'm concerned about, one, part, part of the other thing is, I think Councilmember Gannon mentioned, it's like the official vehicle that guarantees we are listening to people, right, is right here.
Right.
We know that that can happen, it's always available to people, but then when we're out there, and I think the, the city manager has expressed this as well, is staff being there and, and people's perception that that is being taken as, I'm, I'm officially recognizing your concerns, and something's gonna be done about it. I think there's an opportunity to avoid that potential confusion of somebody being able to have access to us and/or staff, and that then we're like, okay. Obviously, that depends on what we may say in, in a communication with somebody, you know, not making promises that you can't uphold, essentially, not saying that that's what's happening, but it's just that potential confusion of, am I really accessing a council member or staff in an official manager, official capacity versus, well, they're here and I can get their ear, but does that result in anything? And again, if it's one person there, then clearly there's no issues. But if two are there, there is, you just don't know, because we shouldn't be talking, if there's two people there, we shouldn't be talking about the content of that, whatever that open house is for.
And that's why I think it's important to have a rule that says no more than one council member can attend, because then you don't have to worry about it.
And that would cut, that would cover, I, I would be.
Then it gets dangerous, who gets to attend, and who decides that?
Right.
It, it, to me, it's an all or nothing thing.
I agree.
Okay, then I would go, I'd, towards nothing, and you wouldn't have to worry about me, because like I said, it's my practice.
Yeah, I make it a practice not to go anyway.
Either.
Steve, you said the same thing, do you make it a practice not to go?
No.
And.
No.
Sandy?
That same presentation comes to us.
Yes, exactly. Oh, yes.
Say that specifically, but that same presentation comes to us.
Well, and then staff collects all the comments and puts them into
The feedback comes to us.
the written documents that are then presented as evidence during, you know, quasi judicial or other public hearing format. I don't know where that would go.
Sounds like it doesn't need to go anywhere.
Sounds like we're okay.
Okay.
I mean, unless you, unless you want.
In the annual, annual review, if it were to become an issue in the future.
So Councilmember Gannon, do you want to add a section for open houses? And then say, "Council members shall not attend an open house."
Can I, can I jump in?
Sure.
It, it, it's really not necessary to do that, you, you're gonna know that an open house is coming up, you can talk amongst yourselves, is any, are any of you planning on attending that, this upcoming open house? Um, and then you can, you can nail it down at the meeting, you can have that discussion.
Right.
You don't need to bound yourself into a corner, I mean, you may want to, two of you may want to go.
Yeah.
And, um, if you have a rule that says only one of you can go, then, then you'd be in violation of that rule, so my suggestion is, is just when you know what's coming up, talk about it at council comments, who's going, who's not going, what are we gonna do when we go? Um, I think that you can, you can handle that problem.
To, to be prepared for.
And, and you've done that before.
Yeah.
You've definitely done that before.
Sure. Or at events, even, you know.
Correct.
Right, okay.